Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order this meeting on the fifteenth of September two thousand twenty-two, City and National Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Donjess, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Patricia Clay.
Here.
Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch. Mark Meehan.
Here.
Derek Tebow.
Okay, thanks. We have a quorum, and gonna continue to move forward here. So next up on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. So we had in our packet minutes from September first, two thousand twenty-two. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at those and wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to accept the minutes as written.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Meehan to accept the minutes of September first, two thousand twenty-two, as written. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't, I don't oppose, but I will abstain.
Yeah, abstentions, okay, so there's, it looks like there's four abstentions here.
Four extensions.
Weren't there, yeah.
Who was?
But that motion passes.
Who were the abstentions?
Dan, Alderman Klee, Maggie, and myself.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all, four of them. It's out of bounds.
I think it's okay, yeah. So we'll do communications next.
Okay, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the planning board. The following communications arrived after your packet was mailed. Case eight twenty-two oh one seven four, at Seven Coliseum Avenue, engineering letter from Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer, nine twelve, two thousand twenty-two. Case eight twenty-two oh one six eight, at seventy-two Lake Street, we have an amended staff report, engineering letter from Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer, nine twelve, two thousand twenty-two. Email from Richard Maynard to table the case till October sixth, two thousand twenty-two. And then the next case, eight twenty-two oh one seven five, that's the forty Groton Road Athletic Fields, we have waiver letters from Hayner Swanson, nine fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. Engineering letter from Joe Mandola, Senior Staff Engineer, nine twelve, two thousand twenty-two. And we have some email correspondence from residents, Beth Barber, nine fourteen, two thousand twenty-two. Laura Witts, nine thirteen, two thousand twenty-two. Tracy Coyle, nine twelve, two thousand twenty-two. Stephanie Auburn, nine nine, two thousand twenty-two. And in your, in the mailer, the lighting plan and the landscape plan for the project. And final item, eight twenty-two oh one eight two, eight Merritt Parkway, email from Attorney attorney requesting postponement to October sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, thank you very much. Any reports of committee or liaisons?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting here for everybody. So, so after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will determine first that the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. The public hearing, if we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin at which time an applicant, the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree to the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. If you'd like to speak, come forward to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This will be your time to express concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. I'll do the same for the folks that may be on Zoom. I'll take those folks after the folks that are here in person. I'll then ask for any testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period at which time they can speak to any of the questions or concerns raised by the public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. The board wants to be fair to everybody and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all of our applicable approval criteria established in the national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I'll thank everybody for their interest and their attention. If you do have a cellphone, please put it on vibrate or turn it off at this time. Okay. I'm gonna step into the agenda here, and I'm gonna read down first through the things that are not happening tonight. So if you are either on Zoom or in the audience and you hear something is not happening, that's your cue that you won't be able to speak or listen to anything on it. So first up, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plan, case number eight twenty-one dash zero two nine nine, one forty-five Temple Street, that case is tabled to October sixth, that will not be heard tonight. Likewise with eight twenty-one dash zero three hundred, which is also one forty-five Temple Street, a site plan, that's tabled to October sixth. Similarly, case number eight twenty-one dash zero three zero one, one forty-five Temple Street, another site plan, that's, is also tabled to October sixth. And again, eight twenty-one dash zero three zero two, one forty-five Temple Street, additional site plan, again, tabled to October sixth. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, there are none. New business site plan, eight twenty-two dash zero one six eight, this is David R. and Daniel M. Tebow, owner, CPC Investments LLC applicant. This is an application acceptance of proposed twenty-unit apartment building located at seventy-five Lake. There was a request by the applicant for this to be deferred to October sixth. I think as the board, we should probably just entertain a motion on whether that was accepted to be tabled until that time. Does anybody from the board wanna make a motion on that? Alderman Klee?
I will motion to table eight two two dash zero one six eight. Do I need to read the rest of it?
No, as long as you have the number there. And that, and again, to a date certain, could you say October?
I'm sorry, to October sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so we have that motion by Alderman Klee to table eight twenty-two dash zero one six eight to October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, as requested by the applicant. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes, that will be tabled. Additional items that will not be heard tonight, new business site plan, eight twenty-two dash zero one eight two, that's Merritt Place LLC owner, that will be postponed to October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, as well as case eight twenty-two dash zero zero three nine, that's another site plan from Merritt Place LLC, that will be postponed to October sixth. All right, so moving on to things that will be heard tonight. Go ahead.
Do we have a motion to postpone that as well?
Okay, yeah, we can take those motions as well. Mr. Barley?
I would make a motion to formally table cases eight twenty-two zero one eight two and eight twenty-two dash zero zero three nine to the October sixth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley to table eight twenty-two dash zero one eight two, eight twenty-two dash zero zero three nine to October sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a second, Mr. Meehan? Okay. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes, those items will be tabled to the October sixth meeting. All right, so first up on the agenda that will be heard tonight, new business site plans, eight twenty-two dash zero one seven four, this is a senior housing, Coliseum Unit One LLC owner, is an application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR zero seven two six, to show a five-story addition for thirty-two additional senior housing units, including associated site improvements, as properties located at Seven Coliseum Avenue. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I move to accept eight two two dash zero one seven four, noting the application is complete.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of eight twenty-two dash zero one seven four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor of the jurisdiction?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passed. Okay, so we have someone for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Robert Duval. I'm an engineer with TF Moran on behalf of the applicant here tonight. I have a colored site plan here, which we can refer to if necessary, and I also have a full set of the plans that were submitted, if you have any questions about those. The project is for, in addition to a senior housing apartment complex that exists at Seven Coliseum Avenue, the owner is Housing Initiatives, and also with me tonight is the Vice President of Housing Initiatives, Bill Walker. Properties at Seven Coliseum Avenue, technically it's a condominium project, but for all intents and purposes, it operates as one unit, or one apartment complex. The lot is four point one three acres, the zoning is general business. A variance for increased density was granted by the ZBA on July twenty-sixth, two thousand Long story short, the original property was, building on the property was constructed in nineteen seventy-nine, it had a hundred one units on this lot. By special exception, this was increased in two thousand eleven by forty units to a total of a hundred forty-one units, and the density increase granted by the ZBA just recently, last month or so, was, is for a thirty-two unit addition for a total of a hundred seventy-three Just for the site plan to give you some orientation, this is the, I'm gonna take that with you. This is the proposed addition here in orange, in the northeast corner of the, of the complex. The original building is this sort of a, well, cross-shaped property here, that was the original hundred one units. The two thousand eleven addition is in the south, southwest corner of the lot, there's parking in front, Coliseum Avenue runs along the east, there's residential properties to the west, a commercial medical office to the north, and state liquor store to the south, and of course, the, the plaza is located on the other side of Coliseum Avenue. Going through parking, the original parking, or the original building of a hundred one units was provided with sixty-one spaces, approved at the time, that was in nineteen seventy-eight or seventy-nine. In two thousand eleven, the forty-unit addition was approved, and that had forty units associated with it, so there was a one-to-one ratio with that site plan approval. And again, we're proposing thirty-two units with thirty-two more spaces for a total of a hundred thirty-three spaces for the total of a hundred seventy-three units. So we've carried forward from the original approval, one space per unit for the last, for the first addition, this addition. And the reason that's adequate is because of the nature of the facility, first of all, elderly housing, seniors, and it's, and the, and the vast majority of the units, other than a very small number, are one-bedroom units, and even of those one-bedroom units, high proportion, approximately fifty percent of the residents that do not have a car, and that's either because they can't drive or they don't wish to have a car, and also, of course, that's facilitated by the proximity of the site to all of the services that they need. This is all affordable units, the original proposal had some section eight units, and, and the current, the previous addition and this addition are tax credit financed, a hundred percent affordable units. So it caters specifically to, and Housing Initiatives has numerous properties throughout the state and Bane, similar, that, that make, that target seniors with low incomes and, and need of affordable housing, and gives them a good place to live. And she targets this type of a neighborhood, that's very walkable, so that residents don't have to depend on cars, and that's reflected in the, in the low demand for parking, and the low trips generated by this too. And, and just to speak about traffic for a minute, for this type of housing, the ITE has a very low generation rate that amounts to for this addition, an additional seven rate trips during peak hours. Even those who do drive, being senior citizens, they typically don't drive at peak hours, they're not going to work, and commuting and so forth. So the trip generation is very low, and the fact that only half of the residents typically have cars in the first place means you're talking about a handful of trips during peak hours, so traffic is really not a factor in this kind of development. The development does meet all other dimensional requirements, height, number of stories, open space, floor area ratios, et cetera, et cetera. We do require a handful of waivers, so let me go through those quickly. First of all, we're requesting a waiver from one ninety dash two seven nine EE, which is to show existing conditions on the site and adjacent parcels, but since this is an addition project on a fully developed site, surrounded by fully developed sites, all of the utilities and the drainage improvements are internal to the lot, there's no additional external connections to the utilities or drainage for that matter, and therefore, we don't believe that really applies to this, to this proposal. The next waiver we're seeking is for one ninety dash eighty-nine, which states that light levels shall not exceed zero point two foot candles at any property line. The proposed lighting is, there's new lighting, but the new lighting reflects the same pattern as the existing light features. The previously approved plan also had granted a waiver to allow zero point two foot candles at a few instances along the property line, and we're really just asking to maintain this waiver. And let me show you where that is. I don't know if you can see from there, but these, these little long shapes represent the foot candles, the outermost foot candle.
Just keep the mic close to you.
The outermost ring is the point two foot candle level, and as you can see, the vast majority of those zero point twos are within the site. The only exception is existing light poles that will be replaced by new light poles that show the point two just stepping over the property line on this commercial property here to the north, a tiny bit here opposite the, the liquor store property to the south, and again, we're talking the zero point two foot candle line. And lastly, in this north corner here, also on the opposite, the medical office, is a slight bit around this existing angle in the property line. So there's no way of actually perceiving this in the field, and the, and the, like trespass, if you will, is, is minimal and was previously approved. The third waiver is for building design, and although I believe that this, that this proposed architecture does conform to the spirit of that provision, we are just asking for a blanket waiver from the regulation because it's, it's more important or equally That the architecture matched the existing. The original construction is this Z shape here, this is the, the view from the south or from the southeast, this view here is from the north, actually from the northwest slightly. This is the existing building, existing main entrance, this was the two thousand eleven addition, the original building has this Z shape, this is the proposed addition in that view, and, this is the proposed addition in, in this view. So it's more important for the sake of the architecture of the complex that the building design reflect what's already existing than, than follow the regulations to the letter. However, I do believe, since this is essentially a brick building, that it does conform in materials and intent to the building design regulations for multifamily buildings. The next waiver, actually the last waiver, is in regard to parking layout, and it's for section one ninety dash one eight four, paragraph D one, which states that parking aisles should not contain more than ten spaces in a row without a planted median or island. All of the new spaces conform to this standard. There are a number of existing spaces where rows of parking exceed ten, here, here. That might be it, this parking here and this parking here. Actually, this parking lot here exists, and in order to make room for the addition, we simply moved it a little bit, a little bit west, but it's really replacing in kind the pavement, well, overlapping the pavement to a large extent, adding a strip of pavement just to make room for the addition here in, in the courtyard. But every new space does contain islands, including here at the bottom. The original application called for a hundred thirty-eight spaces, I believe, but at, at the, at the ZBA, some of the residents actually preferred that some of these spaces be blocked off to preserve large mature trees, so that this now conforms. So we're really not adding any new non-conformance, we're just seeking to not take away more spaces than are necessary. So those are the waivers. Just talk briefly about drainage and utilities. As I said, all utility connections are internal. Water, existing water goes to the existing building in this location, that's basically being replaced by new service to this building, which will then be fed by internal connection. The existing sprinkler water room is there in the back. Sewer, which currently comes out of this location, is now going to be, well, will be maintained, but the new building has a sewer extension that goes around and comes in here rather than go through and disrupt the interior of the existing building. Drainage remains the same. Hard to see on this plan. The drainage largely was collected in the rear of the site, in the existing bio-retention area, that was being maintained, is being maintained in the southern half, and the northern half simply shifted a little bit to the west along with the parking, and it was expanded to account for the very slight increase in impervious, because the existing area here, there was a driveway here and a, and a utility room in this area, so that existing impervious, this existing impervious is being replaced by a thin strip here, a little bit more impervious in the central area, in this small area here. And it was easily accommodated by the slight extension of the bio-retention area, which infiltrates all of the design storms, and essentially no stormwater leaves the site. We have received some comments from city engineering and from planning. We've largely addressed in our latest plan all of these conditions, we have no problem addressing the remaining conditions in short order, you know, subject to the approval of this board. I think I probably covered this in enough detail, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks. Just something for staff, so if the plan's not adding any non-conforming parking, is there really, is the waiver necessary?
Well, the applicant had submitted the waiver just to keep it, so that's why we just included it in there.
Okay.
And then the waiver that they're requesting for building elevations is for the flat roof.
Right, right, yeah, okay. All right. Any questions for the applicant by the board? Anybody? Okay. All right. Thanks. At this point, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Anybody on Zoom?
I see somebody with their hand raised, Phyllis?
What's the name?
Phyllis?
Phyllis?
Yes, my name is Phyllis Murray, I live at the property on Seven Coliseum Avenue. I just have one question.
Sure.
I see that on these plans is going to be a retaining wall to the west of the building, I'm wondering how high that's going to be.
Okay, I'll have the applicant address that, we'll just record anybody else's questions so they can come up once. Any other questions? Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. I do not hear anything else, I guess I'd give the applicant, maybe if you could respond to the one question from the public testimony on the retaining wall height on the west side.
Sure, I'd be happy to. The retaining wall that, that Phyllis is asking about.
Microphone?
Grab the mic. Yep, yep.
Is, is, where, I pointed out on the west side, along the tree line, that is opposite the, the state liquor, the, state liquor store.
What's, what's the height of it?
That is against the residential properties to, to the west. The maximum height is about four or five feet, and it tapers to zero, and the purpose for it was so that we could hold down the ground there, which naturally rises, to allow for that slight extension of the bio-retention that we talked about.
Okay.
So it's a four or five feet facing inward on the west side of the site.
All right, okay, thanks. Okay, any other questions for the applicant from the board, or staff, or in the hearing? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I would just, I would just make the note that there's a big distinction in the regulations between four and five feet, in that if it's more than four feet, then it needs to be an engineered wall and a permit approved by and a permit approved by the building department. So just keep that in mind. It's not anything the board needs to stipulate. But as a matter of their building permit, they should be aware if they exceed four feet, they're going to need that permission and permit.
Okay, thanks. Other comments or questions by the board while we're in the hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing then. Thank you very much. Move to the meeting. So we have an addition on the senior housing complex here. The waivers that are presented, I think, are reasonably typical of what we see, particularly for an existing building. I don't personally have any issues with those. The lighting that's sort of creeping over the border is, is, you know, essentially on Coliseum or commercial property. So that's not typically an issue for us either. But I welcome any comments or discussion by the board. All right, anybody want to make a motion on this? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business project A22-0174 site plan, senior housing Coliseum Unit 1 LLC owner. And that motion with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan in NRO section 190-146D. And that motion to approve will be with a total of 10 stipulations. The first four of those stipulations are all waiver requests. Stipulation one, being a request for a waiver from 190-279EE, will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Waiver request number two is a request for a waiver of NRO section 190-89, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three is a request for a waiver from NRO section 190-184D1, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number four is a request for a waiver from section, from NRO section 190-172 regarding architectural and design standards and specifically the roof. And that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number five to read as written in the staff report. Stipulation number six to include the date for the letter from Joe Mandola as September 12, 2022. And then stipulations seven, eight, nine, and 10 to read as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Varley with the 10 stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. All right, next up on our agenda, new business site plan. This is case number A22-0175. This is CMI Leasing Corporation owner. Brothers is a Sacred Heart of Bishop Gerton High School applicant. This is a proposed site plan to show an athletic field complex along with associated site improvements. This property is located at 40 Groton Road. So for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over case A22-0175, property located at 40 Groton Road.
Okay, so we have the motion to accept jurisdiction for A22-0175 by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Mian. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. We have someone from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here tonight representing the applicant, Bishop Gerton High School. Also with me here tonight are members of the BG team, Linda Broder, the president, Jason Sternisti, the principal, attorney Jerry Purnier. We also have Meg Bozinski, a professional engineer with Activitas. They were the athletic field designers as well as designed the lighting and landscaping systems for the project. We also are joined by Scott Thorin, a professional engineer with Van S and Associates via Zoom. They provided the traffic consulting for the project. We're here tonight seeking site plan approval for a proposed athletic field facility to be located at 40 Groton Road. I just got a brief presentation here for you tonight, after which myself or members of the team would be happy to answer any questions that you have. So if you look up at, at your screens, I've got an aerial map of, of the property, 40 Groton Road, located in the southwest portion of the city. Map D Lot 7. It's about a 47 acre site with about 1,800 feet of frontage along Groton Road, located in the R40 residential zone. The site is abutted by single-family residences to the north, east, and west along with a 400-plus acre conservation land over the state line in Dunstable to our south. Currently, the main body of the site is being used as a gravel pit and material stockpile operation, which has been ongoing for many years. As I mentioned, located in the central portion of the site with gated access about halfway along Groton Road. That's fairly evident in the aerial photo that's on the screen. The westerly and northerly portions of the site contain wetlands. It's about a third of the site in total. And the easterly portion of the site is mostly wooded, but there's certainly evidence of previous earth removal activities that have since revegetated there. The site also contains an old paved and gravel driveway that runs in a north-south direction and serves as an unofficial cut-through from Groton Road to the Dunstable Mass conservation land. The public generally parks along, you know, the Groton Road shoulder, sometimes 10 to 15 cars at a time on a nice day and essentially trespass through the site to get to the Dunstable conservation land. The site contains relatively flat to moderate topography with the exception of the large stockpile areas that are out there. The soils are generally well-drained, again, except where the earth removal has taken place. Wetlands were flagged this past spring by Brendan Quigley, a certified wetland scientist with GOV Environmental Services and subsequently surveyed by our office. You'll see those on the plans. There are a number of wetlands that are peppered again, generally in the northerly and westerly portions of the site. There are three vernal pools that we identified onsite, one located in the middle of the site up along Groton Road, as well as two others located in the south-westerly portion of the site. Water and overhead electric and tell data utilities are available within Groton Road. There is no municipal gas or sewer in this area of the city. Linda, could you jump to the master site plan, please? Yes, thank you. Last time I was before this board, we had a, a different project with some survey matters to resolve, a little bit of hair on it. And we've got a couple more on this project. I'll give you the overview on those and then be happy to answer any detailed questions. So I'll call your attention to the north-easterly portion of the site along Groton Road. You'll see some heavy lines up in that corner that look a little different than the rest of the frontage. So essentially, Groton Road in 1799 was laid out by the city of Nashua. Like most rural roads, it had all kinds of curves and bends to it. In 1937, the state came through and straightened out the road as it exists today. The right-of-way associated with that 1799 layout, as far as the evidence we found, was never formally discontinued or disposed of, which is very common along this corridor. In fact, we encountered the same situation across the street in a project that's, I was involved with there. In addition, there is a triangle-shaped remnant parcel that exists between these two layouts. Again, the 1799 city layout and the 1937 state layout that appears to be owned by the state of New Hampshire would be a remnant parcel. These areas are not, were not represented or shown on previous survey plans that we had seen for this lot and were certainly unknown to the owner and to BG as we started off this process. There are two separate conditions that we have worked with staff in the hopes that the board would be agreeable to in terms of dealing with these two areas as we move forward. The first would be petitioning for a formal street discontinuance before the Board of Alderman. That process, as you know, takes some time. It's the same process that occurred across the street. The second would be obtaining either easements or an approval from the state of New Hampshire to allow for the proposed public and private uses through that triangle piece of land. And we've started that process with the state. I'll talk about a little bit with, about the timing of the project. And we hope that, that that's a reasonable approach, given the time that it takes to accomplish some of those matters. So in terms of the proposed project, our client, Bishop Gerton High School, has an agreement in place to purchase the property. Upon purchase of the property, BG is seeking to construct an athletic field facility. The athletic field complex would include three multipurpose fields, a six-lane running track, areas for track and field events, six tennis courts, a small maintenance and locker room building, along with associated parking and site improvements. Access to the site will be provided via a new site driveway off of Groton Road along the easterly side of the property. We feel like this is a, the best location and a better location than where the existing drive exists, given site distance and safety concerns there. Actually, Linda, if you don't mind, could you just go to the next screen? We have. There we go. This is a nice rendered plan that was put together that may tell the story a little bit better. So as I mentioned, the existing gravel drive located in the central portion of the site will continue to be remain, will continue to remain and be used for gated emergency access. We have 210 total parking spaces for the facility. The internal parking areas adjacent to the fields and tracks include bus and parent drop-off and pickup areas. Public water and underground electric and tell data utilities will be extended to the site from Groton Road. A small septic system will be constructed to service the proposed maintenance and locker room building. There are numerous stormwater management improvements proposed throughout the site, including an onsite drainage system as well as four different stormwater management practices. The facility will be fully fenced in and locked when not in use for security purposes. So with regards to use, the facility is intended to be a private outdoor recreational facility that will service, serve as a satellite campus for BG's main campus on Lund Road. The Lund Road campus, if you've been over there, certainly has limitations in terms of expansion of field areas. And BG is currently sending their students to many different areas around the city for their various fields, tracks, and practices to, and to play games. The use that I just described unfortunately is, is not listed explicitly in the land use code. Therefore, we requested and were granted a use variance for this project earlier this year by the zoning board. The intent of the facility is to provide one central location for the majority of BG's fall and spring season teams, soccer, lacrosse, football, track and field, tennis and softball. Really, the intent of the site is to be used for practice in sub-varsity games. There could be a handful of varsity games here as well. But again, it's really intended to be a practice facility and for sub-varsity games. BG will continue to partner with the city to use Stelo Stadium for large-scale spectator games and events. Lighting is proposed within the site, including all the fields, courts, and track areas, as well as within the proposed parking and driveway areas for safety. In terms of spectators or parents watching games, we would use portable bleachers here. There's certainly no grandstands or large-scale press boxes that are proposed, nor are there any plans to, you know, have concessions within the building itself. In terms of hours of operation, so in order to provide BG maximum flexibility in terms of moving forward with the project, in our application, the hours of operation were listed Monday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. However, like with most schools, during a typical weekday, school's going to end around 2:00, 2:30. Students are going to either be bused or drive themselves to the facility. I could envision a first wave of practices from 3:00 to 5:00, second wave of practices from 5:00 to 7:00. There are locker room and bathroom facilities that would be within that small outbuilding onsite. And students would then be either picked up directly at the facility by their parents or drive themselves home if they're of driving age. Certainly, the facility would be staffed by a supervisor or coach at all times. It's important to note that this facility will be mainly used during the spring and fall sports seasons, less so during the summer, and then won't be used at all, will be closed during the winter time. So it's, it's, it's more of a seasonal use. Like to talk about lighting for a second. So as I mentioned, all the fields, tracks, and court areas will be lit when in use and when needed. They'll be turned off generally about a half hour after the latest use or 10:00 p.m. at the latest. All lighting is carefully designed to minimize light spill, trespass, and glare by using the best athletic technology available, that being the TLC for LED athletic lighting systems as provided by Musco Lighting, which has superior spill and glare reduction. So just for reference, I had included in the display package, Linda, if you could go to the final slide, Meg from Activitas had provided this photograph here, which represents a, a field space that they've worked on in the town of Lexington, Mass, that uses this lighting technology. And I just felt it was a good visual aid, a graphic, in terms of the field lighting technology, how advanced it is and how downcast that lighting is. You can see the highly focused lights within the field area. However, shortly after that, you're really back to, back to nothing. So I just wanted to offer that photo as, as a visual aid in terms of kind of what, how these playfield areas would be, would be lit. The proposed athletic light poles at the track and field, there'll be two 80, 80-foot tall poles and two 90-foot tall poles. At the tennis courts, there will be three 50-foot tall poles and two 60-foot tall poles. At the multipurpose field space, there will be six 70-foot tall poles. So again, these heights are necessary. The taller the pole, the more downcast and focused that light can be and the less spillover there will be. This allows the, these courts to permit a safe use at night while also really eliminating any, any spillover onto abutting areas. The system will provide an average foot candle level of about 50-foot candles at the field, within the track, and then in the multipurpose fields, and about 75-foot candles within the tennis courts, which are all kind of generally accepted in terms of athletic field facilities. And as I mentioned, the system will utilize Musco Lighting's Control Link system, which allows the user, BG, to schedule all lighting so that lights are not on when they are not scheduled for use. That's a really key component to any lighting system. With regards to wetlands, Linda, if you don't mind going back to the colored display plan, please. Careful consideration was made in our design and the layout of the project to minimize environmental impacts, specifically the large wetland areas, as I mentioned, in the northerly and westerly portions of the site and their associated buffers. As a result, we come before you tonight with a plan that completely avoids any direct wetland impacts and has minimized the buffer impacts as best possible. We are proposing about 41,000 square feet, so just shy of an acre of buffer area. It's important to note that the majority of this buffer impact is related to either the restoration and revegetation of currently disturbed buffer areas around the gravel pit, stockpile operation, or associated with the proposed widened shoulder and pedestrian improvements along Groton Road. Over the last few months, we worked extensively with the Concom and the review of the project, including- Over the last few months, we worked extensively with the Concom and the review of the project, including conducting a site walk. We were granted a favorable recommendation on August 9th and in turn, a special exception from the zoning board on August 23rd. With regards to stormwater, always an important element to any project, especially so here, given the project's close proximity to the adjacent wetlands. The existing site, of course, does not contain any formal drainage or treatment practice, specifically the gravel area, really just sheet flows in a westerly direction directly into the wetlands. As part of the proposed project, we've got a detailed onsite drainage and stormwater management system. Measures as proposed would significantly improve the qualitative treatment and quantitative attenuation of stormwater runoff entering those adjacent wetlands where none currently exist. I'd also like to note that the project actually results in a slight decrease in impervious area or increase in open space due to the large paved and hard-packed gravel areas that exist on site today. So as a result, my testimony is that there's a significant improvement to stormwater compared with the existing condition. Traffic, traffic input impact memo and TIR worksheet were prepared by the traffics by the traffic consultant, Van Essen Associates. As I mentioned, Scott Thornton is on on Zoom with us here tonight, was submitted to the city for review. The memo provides a site distance analysis from the proposed driveway and reports back that it meets or exceeds the minimum site distance requirements. The memo also provides a trip generation analysis for the proposed use. So this analysis was really based on the most conservative situation, that being when all the fields and courts and tracks and public parking are all being used at the same time. While this is what needs to be presented in terms of the the traffic numbers, we certainly feel like this is a conservative approach, given that the situation is likely only to happen a few times a year, if at all. Specifically, facilities like this are tougher to analyze as they don't necessarily fall perfectly within the uses outlined in the ITE manual. So the results of the trip generation analysis represented that the project will be well below the thresholds in the weekday AM peak hour, where the facility will essentially be not in use. We are slightly over the thresholds for the PM weekday peak, and we are over in the Saturday time period as well. And so further study is required in order to determine if off-site improvements would be warranted as part of this project. So we recently met with the city engineer and the city traffic engineer for a scoping meeting. We've we've come to agreement on what that further study would include, which is not only an analysis of the peak time that I referenced, but also an analysis of the, you know, more normal use, the average use of this facility and what its impacts would be. This study would be performed and submitted to the city for review and approval prior to the final signing of the plan. Any off-site improvements identified as part of this study would certainly be designed and submitted to city staff for review and approval. I would say that this is not an uncommon approach for such projects. It would allow BG the important step forward should the board grant a conditional approval here tonight, while making sure that all the necessary studies are completed to the city's satisfaction prior to allowing the project to move forward with construction. The last project element I wanted to talk about, which is probably the most important in my mind, is the pedestrian improvements. So aside from the actual playfield facility, this is kind of the item that has the greatest benefit to the public. So as you know, the site is located in close proximity to really three great public parks or or public resources in this area. We've got Southwest Park, Udicky Farm, which is located just northwest of this property. You've got the Dunstable Conservation Land, as I mentioned, it's about 420 acres, located just over the state line to our south. And then you also have the Nashua River Rail Trail, which is located further to our west. This property has the unique ability to provide a vital connection between these three areas and proposes to do exactly that. First, the project involves widening pavement along the site's entire frontage on Groton Road in order to provide an eight-foot wide shoulder that can be used by both pedestrians and bicyclists. This is certainly a challenging endeavor, given the 1,800 feet of frontage. There's challenging topography, utilities, mature trees, wetlands, wetland buffers to contend with. So in talking with planning and engineering staff, we had come up with what we feel is a compromise solution that balances providing this connectivity along the frontage while not further encroaching or impacting some of the wetlands and mature trees that exist along that property. And what this connection is going to do is it's going to lead to an existing sidewalk near Hadley Drive, which is just to our west. And from there, there are sidewalk connections all the way to the rail trail to the west. So that's the first connection. Second would be, as you see on our plan in the in the northeast corner or top right-hand corner, we are proposing a public parking lot and trail on our site that will provide a permanent public connection to Dunstable, Mass. conservation land. It connects with an existing sidewalk and crosswalk located along Groton Road that connects to Southwest Park, Udicky Farm. BG would propose to provide the city a public access easement upon this area. And the Dunstable Rural Land Trust, who is the steward of the conservation land that I discussed, is supportive of such a connection and sees this project, this recreational project, as really an extension of their 400-plus acres. Mr. Chair, we are requesting four waivers here tonight, outlined in my letter dated September 14th, 2022. Waivers are related to existing conditions of adjacent properties, landscape island for rows with more than 10 spaces, building elevations, and waiver of non-residential architectural design standards as it relates to the small maintenance building and locker room, essentially to allow staff to review and approve those at a later date. That's an approach we've taken at other projects where you have very small buildings that are kind of accessory to the the remainder of the project. And the last waiver is for lighting. We do have a slight spillover along the southerly property line related to the fields. Mr. Chair, I just asked that my letter be incorporated into the record, and I'd be happy to expand on on any of those four waivers, should it be the will of the board. So in summary, we believe our request is reasonable and conforms with the spirit and intent of the land use code. Careful consideration was made during the design of this project to minimize impacts to the proposed wetlands, minimize impacts to buffers and other environmentally sensitive areas of the site, and also minimize impacts to abutting properties. We think this is a great use for the property, for the BG community, for the public as it relates to the pedestrian improvements, and we think this will fit well into the neighborhood. We have reviewed the staff report and certainly are agreeable to the conditions as written, and we respectfully seek your approval here tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So the only question I had was just that you mentioned the lighting. Is there any proposed audio systems? Speaker system?
Yeah, so I think there there would be. That's kind of yet to be fully vetted out in terms of sound system. And so that would be that would be kind of part of the final design for the for the system. As I mentioned, we're not holding large spectator, you know, events here, so we expect that to be to be minimal.
Okay, all right. Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, just a couple of questions. One is you described the, you know, the public access features. And at the same time, you noted that the, you know, the facility would be, you know, gated, closed when not in use. So I guess first I just want to confirm then the expectations that these would not be, the fields would not be generally accessible to the public. And then the related question is, I'm assuming that that access point would leave open this this public parking area even when the field is not in use and when it's gated?
Correct, yes. So the the new existed existing, I'm sorry, easterly access drive would not be gated until you've passed the entrance to that public parking lot. And yes, confirming that the fields itself would be fully fenced in and would be privately used.
Great, thank you. You you touched on this a little bit, and I saw on the staff report that there is the, as you noted, the the actual increase in in green space. I wonder if you could just maybe touch on that a little bit more. I know you indicated there's there's a fair bit of like packed and gravel area that's existing. But sort of what is the sort of dynamic there, you know, in terms of the impervious surface that would be added here versus what's on site now?
Just want to get you those exact numbers. So the minimum required open space in the R40 zone is 75%. So the existing open space is about 84% and the proposed open space is about 88%. So it's about a 4% uptick. So a lot of those, a lot of the area within the gravel operation, the stockpile, is really either pavement or hard-packed gravel that's either down a ledge or very close to ledge. So for all intents and purposes, when you see that aerial map and that big scar in the middle of the site, that's essentially acts as a paved a paved surface, so.
So that's impervious currently?
That would be considered impervious. And so when we take a step back from that and you look at the field, you know, we've got impervious for the track as well as the the site drive and the parking lot. But even with that, it would increase the the open space by about 4%.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions for staff.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, we'll wait for the staff questions. Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom, I think you said in your talk that the Conservation Commission has reviewed this?
They have, yes. Yeah, they issued a favorable recommendation.
Okay, sometimes we have that in our packet, but we have one that I saw for this one. You use the phrase essentially trespassing in regard to that gravel area. And I see what you're proposing, and I think I understand the fencing, it comes across just south of the parking lot, the public parking lot. So that, as as you said, is open for public use. The fence loops around and then connects into the track, it looks like?
Yeah, it's a little bit wonky in that area where the perimeter fence is one and the same with the track fence. So essentially, there would be a strip of land along that easterly portion of the site that would continue to be outside of the fence and accessible to the public to allow that north-south trail connection.
Okay. And is there any, I didn't see any fencing diagram or any kind of projection of what the fencing would look like along that public space?
So we have kind of a combination of fencing. We've got some four-foot chain link fence, we've got some six-foot chain link fence, and then we've got some bigger fencing and netting for, you know, behind some of the playfield areas. So as proposed right now, it would be it would be all chain link fence, generally generally six six feet tall, probably black, black vinyl.
Okay, and that's not, so there's no public access to the track itself? That's going to be privately?
Correct, correct, yep. So the public access would be the entrance drive into the facility, the 20-space parking lot in that top right corner, as well as the the trail that essentially runs parallel to the to our easterly property line to connect through.
And then my last, is this phases? Is this all in one shot that you're going to do this entire development or?
So I didn't speak to the timing of the project. I probably should have entered that in to the record. So BG has the opportunity to close on this property in the near future, which is why we're before you here tonight. Then it's likely about a year or so, both for the, there's a lease on the stockpile operation, so they have some time to vacate the site. And during that time, you know, BG will also be going out to all their alumni on a capital campaign to to fund the project and to take the next step forward. So the earliest we envision that this site would be constructed or start construction is 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 likely spring of 2024. And so it would not surprise me if we were granted approval here tonight that I would be back before you about a year from now, asking for an extension for the project. In terms of the phasing of the construction itself, it's certainly the the hope and the goal of BG to construct the project all at once. But that would probably likely depend on the finances and the timing of the project moving forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Harper?
Yes, I I have a few questions. I'm just trying to picture what the what the operation is going to look like. So this is going to be used during the school year or also during the summer or what is that going to look like?
It will mainly be used during the spring and fall sports seasons associated with the school, but it will be in operation during the summer as well.
Okay, and what are there hours? Like, how how early would people be there competing?
So that's what we've kind of left left it as flexible as we can. That's our hope, so 8:00 a.m. to to 10:00 p.m. Again, kids are in school, so on a typical day, I I don't expect anybody to be at the facility until at least 3:00 o'clock. But they may have certain camps or other events there during the summertime where they may want to start at that early hour. I guess there's no there's no set schedule. We're kind of looking for the maximum flexibility in terms of hours. We did do some research on some of the city parks in the area. Obviously, Udicky Farm is right down the street in terms of when that's in use, when the lights are on and off. And we generally found the the 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. range to be to be fairly common amongst those. That's at least our understanding.
Okay, I I'm just trying to think, you know, Saturday morning, having a P.A. system, so when calling a game or something in my backyard. So. It has a grandstand, I'm assuming, the the field?
Just portable bleachers.
And and about how many people would be able to sit there?
That would depend on the size of the portable bleachers. So we've got 210 parking spaces on site. Again, the intent of this facility is really for practices and some vars sub-varsity games, you know, freshman JV. Large spectator sports and events will still be held at Stelo, so.
Okay. And then my last question is just, will parking be allowed on the drive into the the field? Or will there be no parking signs?
Along the drive aisle? That hasn't that hasn't come up yet. Typically, the fire department would make that request. That has not, that has not come up. So at this point, I would say no.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Question, will there be provisions for the public to have access to the Dunstable Rural Land Trust Conservation Area from the Nashua side, you know, from Groton Road?
Absolutely, yep. That that entrance drive, the parking lot and the trail, BG will convey an easement to the city for public access.
So they'd be able to get to the Dunstable Rural Land Trust area?
Yes, it'll wrap all the way around and connect through, yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Cleat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, if my questions aren't appropriate to this, please let me know. I'm still learning and I have no problems being told I'm wrong. I I just really wanted to bring up two questions. One is the sound and the lighting. I'll start with the lighting first. I maybe I misheard you, but I thought you said there were going to be 210 lights, but your diagram and so on shows 230, as does your letter. So is it 230 lights that would be put up? So not lights, I mean parking.
Parking spaces, yes.
Parking spaces.
Yes, yes, there are 210 parking spaces proposed for the BG facility as well as 20 spaces in the public lot, so yes, 230.
Okay, thank you very much. And the other thing is I just want to kind of circle back to the P.A. system and the up till 10:00 p.m. at night. Mr. Chairman, please tell me if if I'm wrong. Would that be within our jurisdiction as far as the sound and so on, as it could affect, as as was brought up from my colleague to the left, whether or not that could affect the neighbors? Because much like what she said, I would be concerned if I was a resident, there was a game going until 10:00 o'clock at night. I think I'd be more upset with that than the lighting. So does that fall within this area?
I think I'll defer to staff, but I think we do have that option of hours on that. But there also is ordinances within the city. I don't know if anybody knows what they are off the top of their head and the timing and the decimal levels, but they're.
General understanding, if it's after a certain hour, it's unreasonable hour.
Yeah.
It would be a problem.
Yeah, so I don't know what those are off the top of my head, but there are, there are those ordinances that essentially are in place that we, you know, if we do nothing, those exist, yeah.
So then my question would be, and you probably will not be able to answer this, do we know how many evening games? You gave us an hour, I said it could be Monday through Sunday, but how many evening games there could be or events, I should say, I don't want to say games, but events that could affect that neighborhood and the quality of life? Having a small child could affect everybody hooting and hollering in the PA system.
Yeah, sure. I can kind of confer with the BG team about maybe how many they expect. We certainly can't predict the exact amount in terms of the timing of the event, nighttime, 8:00 to 10:00, something like that, and what the nature of that event might be.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Other questions by the board?
I have a question for staff. For staff, I know you wanted to put those off.
Yeah, if you're done with the applicant ones, we can go to staff, yeah. I'll start with Mr. Ballinger first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, Mr. Hudson, it would be a little bit unusual for the traffic analysis to follow subsequent to the application. Is it logical to assume that city staff thinks that traffic obstacles can be managed? And is engineering staff comfortable with moving forward without having traffic documentation in hand?
Short answer is yes, but longer answer is, we did have a scoping meeting as was described. This is a fairly unique facility. You're going to have periods of year where there's no activity and then periods of year where there's peak activity. So the amount of traffic is going to vary quite, quite, quite a bit. So it's, it's one that's kind of hard to predict. But we did talk about a process of looking at the study and what we would ask them to look at in terms of intersections, upstream, downstream, major intersections along routing to BG campus and/or wherever they expect, you know, parents to be coming from, that sort of thing. So yeah, we don't have all those answers, but we don't, we don't anticipate major impacts because traffic will disperse. I mean, it'll be most concentrated, obviously, at the driveway. They'll look at the driveway, there's good site distance at the driveway. We're going to carefully look at turn lane warrants. It's possible that even if it was warranted in a peak condition, we still wouldn't recommend installing a turn lane because it is such a sporadic, heavy use. So yeah, I mean, it is, it is a little unusual. We have outlined a process that we would go through. We don't expect any hurdles that we can overcome as part of that subsequent study and review.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I had sort of a related question for Dan, maybe you, by Ben or staff, which is, you know, to, to Mr. Ballinger's point about the sort of ordering of the study, you know, Tom testified that the intent is that the fields are going to be used for practice and sub-varsity games. I'm just wondering if there's sort of a, if there's a trigger point traffic-wise that would cause the plan to require additional review, you know, based on the information, obviously, it's been presented by the applicant right now. I'm assuming that the traffic numbers are lower, given their, you know, expressed use of the property. But if they were to move, you know, obviously varsity football games to this field, for example, it seems to me that would have a significantly different traffic impact. So is there, is there a point at which we, you, there would be a trigger in terms of traffic counts or the proposed revised use that would cause us to need to review it further? Because if not, I guess I would want to consider maybe including some sort of condition.
Oh, is that me?
Oh, anybody, I guess.
I don't, no, I don't have any magic numbers or any situation in my mind. I mean, as was characterized, the trip generation, they prepare, they believe is conservative. We believe it's also very conservative. And it probably represents activities on, you know, one of the peak weekday PMs or a Saturday, in which case, you know, that's once, once a week, twice a week. So, yeah, I mean, we don't, it's hard to predict exactly what the patterns will be, exactly how much traffic we'll have here. But given the characterization that they've made, which wasn't varsity football, they've also suggested it wouldn't be rented out to AAU teams and that sort of thing. So given that it's an answer they're using to the school, you know, we don't, we, it all sounds fairly reasonable. Yeah, having said that, I don't know, maybe there's additional conditions or thoughts that could be carried for, you know, traffic levels or monitoring post, post-implementation, that sort of thing.
Yeah, it sounds like.
I was just going to add something to that if I could, yeah. So Scott Thornton from Van Ness is on the call. If you've got detailed questions, I believe the soccer or the field component, the most conservative, was a soccer complex. So if you think of the Fort Devens or something with 20 fields that are running game after game after game, that's the use that we use for this facility. So I would, I would certainly represent that games, except for maybe a varsity football game, are baked into these numbers already. And Linda from BG just leaned over my shoulder and said they're in year one of a 10-year lease with the city for Stellows, so there's no changes there in terms of some of those larger-scale events. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I guess maybe.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to clarify my comment. I wasn't necessarily inquiring about a trigger of some sort personally with my line of questioning. It was really just the order of operations. If Mr. Hudson feels that they can adequately address issues moving forward, again, it's slightly out of order from what we normally consider, but given, I think, the unique use of the site and the fact that it's, it's not a Monday-through-Friday operation, you know, all throughout the year, I think I would respect the opinion of staff with regard to any subsequent analysis.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
I have a question, probably for staff. Have the abutters along Airly Avenue been made aware of this proposed project?
The abutters would have been notified or the association at this point that's putting in the houses, I mean, I'm not even sure. There might be one, one or two people living there right now.
So still an empty neighborhood, very much so.
But yeah, as part of the abutter notification, whoever's in charge of that property right now was notified.
Yeah, there's a, there's a name on the paperwork, BNA Construction LLC.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that's under construction, right?
Yes.
Yeah, some of those houses are incomplete.
There is no light trespass either, that's the point you didn't bring up, but there is no light trespass on.
Okay. Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just one other clarification for staff. There's, we have a, again, Tom mentioned that there's the parcel that's, that's owned by the, or the state potentially has rights to, and that there would be, you know, it would be necessary to get, you know, an easement. I just wanted to confirm that Condition 9, is that, is that intended to cover any requirements for easements with the state?
Yeah, actually, it makes reference upon the state-owned land along Groton Road.
Yeah.
And easement, so I think we gather.
Okay.
If you feel that is appropriate language.
That's great, thank you.
Other questions from the board for staff or the applicant? Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really just curious, are these going to be grass fields or artificial turf?
Good question.
As of now, they're proposed to be turf fields.
Other questions by the board? Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the waiver requests from 19279 EE, which covers, requires existing conditions to be shown onsite and on adjacent parcels, a waiver has been requested. I just want to affirm or have the applicant affirm that they have shown existing conditions on the proposed parcel, on the, on their site parcel. They're just seeking the waiver for showing, not showing it on other parcels because as a matter of principle, I mean, a site plan should show everything on their parcel from my perspective. So maybe, perhaps, maybe we could make a modification of that condition when we get there, just that this is granted with respect to existing features on adjacent parcels. Because I don't, I don't want to be granting permission to waive the requirement for showing features on the parcel itself. So if that, maybe just confirm that that's the case as I've described it, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, confirm that it's on adjacent parcels.
Yep, okay. Mr. Peterson?
I didn't hear the answer to the question, what kind of turf will it be? Natural turf or artificial turf?
He said natural turf, yeah.
Oh, no, artificial turf.
Did he say art?
Artificial.
Well, maybe we should have him clarify.
It'll be, as proposed right now, synthetic turf fields.
Because the reason why I want to know the difference is, is always talking about PFAS material being embedded in the artificial turf and all these high school kids are getting exposed to it, like soccer goalies jumping up and down on this artificial turf and they come down with, you know, surprising cancers that high school kids don't typically get. So I think it wouldn't hurt to take a look more closely at which type of artificial turf is being proposed.
Agreed. Mr. Mann?
My catch, Tom, it's such a tight plan. We often have snow removal areas designated on the plans when we receive them. One of the advantages, of course, in New England is having turf and being able to clear it off for the, for the winter. Is any of that an issue here as far as storm drainage or is there a reason we don't have that noted on the plan?
Because I think it's really BG's intent not to use the facility in the wintertime. I also think there's enough, you know, this isn't a commercial operation, so if they were going to, for some reason, use a portion of the fields for whatever practice or game, maybe late, late fall, early spring, you know, at the end or beginning of those seasons, we've also got plenty of room on site. We can designate storage areas, but I think in reality, they wouldn't maybe plow out every, you know, the entire parking areas and would, would leave some internal spots, so.
Okay. Other questions by the board? All right, hearing done, I'm going to go ahead and move to the public portion of this hearing. So at this point, I'll ask, is anybody in the audience, and I'm going to start with people here in the audience, wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? So go ahead and come on up, state your name and address for the record, and go ahead and either ask your question or state your concern.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Dionne and I live at 417 Main Dunstable Road. I'd like to first express appreciation to the landowner and the applicant for seeking to continue to meet the needs of generations of trespassers to access the Dunstable Rural Land Trust land. And my concern is primarily regarding traffic. Living on Main Dunstable Road, the area doesn't exist in a vacuum and there are lots of little roads through the area and also larger roads like Main Dunstable that can be impacted by the continuing increase in traffic. And this project does not exist in a vacuum. The housing directly across the road is new housing. The housing, the abutters on this side, I think he said easterly, where the proposed public access is, is new housing, so there's more traffic coming in. And I believe the applicant said the proposed date for completion would be 2024, along with the middle school also in the southwest quadrant, bringing more traffic through the area. And I also noticed that the applicant said anticipating two waves, and I noticed that the waves of traffic are also, as a parent, when my kids are out, I notice that the waves coincide. Obviously, younger schoolchildren, public schoolchildren, elementary schoolchildren are going to be getting out and crossing the road and trying to possibly be with friends at those times when the waves, so if there's a wave of 16 to 18-year-olds driving through the neighborhood, concurring with a wave of kiddos getting off the bus and trying to cross the road to play, and then concurrently a wave of traffic leaving from the area at the same time that kids are crossing back home to go home for dinner and get ready for school the next day. I do find that concerning as a parent, maybe a step back from just the direct site and the direct turning area to the greater impact on the neighborhood as the southwest area continues to be expanded very rapidly, including this project. So just specific, to restate, specific concerns, the timing of the traffic and the, I don't know if quality is the right word, but if we're, with all due respect, if we're having a lot of extra teens coming through for games, they're not necessarily known to be the most experienced of drivers coming through. And my second thought would be a question for the applicant, whereas the property does connect, I've seen, living in the area, animals using this area as a corridor to cross from the Terrell Homestead land on the one side of the road and accessing the Dunstable Rural Land Trust and the Greg Woods further down. How much, if any, of the fencing, what percent, if any, of the fencing is going to include some of the wetland areas that were listed so that animals would have a means to continue to cross through the area? Thank you for your attention.
All right, thanks. Come on up.
I'm kind of short.
Pull the whole thing down.
I know.
Just nice to work there.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I'll just state for the record, I'm a member of the Board of Education, but I'm speaking for myself tonight here as a citizen of Nashua. I've had people already questioning about when the new middle school opens up, about the traffic that's going to happen cutting through West Gate. So I'm a little bit concerned with this also, more traffic going down, as a previous speaker talked about, Main Dunstable Road, cutting through West Gate, West Holler Street, which I live on. The question is, I didn't hear, maybe I missed it, and you can correct me, was there a traffic study done for this? I mean, because we're going to have more vehicles on the road going from BG all over, and they're not just going to be from Nashua because BG just doesn't service Nashua residents. They've come from Manchester, Massachusetts, so you're going to be getting people maybe coming in through Dunstable off of whatever road, Depot Road. So, I mean, you've got to factor all of this in now. We're going to have a big school project that's in the operations now, and a member of the Board of Aldermen is sitting here, and I believe she's on joint special. We're going to have that happening. That's going to be a big project, and we're going to have more traffic going down there because people don't go down there at this point in time because there's no school. So we're going to be redistricting more buses, more vehicles, parents picking their students up. So I think that's a very important piece, which we seem to leave out all the time, these traffic studies. How many more vehicles are going to be put on the road going there? I was a little bit confused, is there a development there right now with people living around this area? Because I'll tell you, I have Stellows in my backyard, and I remember when we were building Stellows back in 2000, I was on the Board of Education back then. And we had stipulations, times, PA system, that all got changed after, because a member who's on the Board of Aldermen now was on the Board of Education after I moved to become an Alderman, changed everything. I will tell you, with the river, that PA system comes around the river, right into our neighborhood. And when, that's what, when Bernie Streeter was mayor. You remember that, Attorney Prunia, don't you? That whole debacle?
Can you just talk to us versus the public? Because it's not a.
So I think that has to be looked at when you're boarding something in a neighborhood and there's abutters. The lights with Stellows, I mean, you go off of West Holler Street to Riverside, you see the lights. Those lights don't always go off at, you know, you say 30 minutes after. Those lights, if they're not going off 30 minutes after, I don't care how much the light shine down, there's always a reflection somewhere. So, I mean, we always have to think about and look at the abutters that we forget about and how the noise travels. So if you don't have enough trees to buffer everything, how is the noise going to travel? Because I know, you come down to where I live, and my name might be on the wall of Stellows, but I was not for Stellows because we forget about the people. People don't have to be the NIMBY population, like, not in my neighborhood. have to be the NIMBY population, like, not in my neighborhood. You have to consider who lives in the neighborhood when you add something to a neighborhood that is natural into that neighborhood and a residential neighborhood. So I would be cautious and I would also take a traffic study. And if there are abutters there, I hope people went out and spoke to them so they understand if you have new homes going up, that's not fair to them when they see what's going to happen here. Because if, the market is leveling now, you know, homes aren't selling as fast as they were. Nashua is not the number one place to live in the state as Manchester. So, you know, let's preserve Nashua a little bit and let's consider who's living in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else in the audience here wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a comment? Okay. I'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
I'd like to speak.
Sorry, we've got some pretty bad feedback. Feedback with, yeah, there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Laura Wheaton, is there? No. Wait for that person to get situated. Is there anybody else on Zoom wishing to speak?
Hi.
I can hear.
Is that any better?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Thanks.
Okay, I'm very, very sorry about that. I'm having a problem. May I speak?
Yes, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please, and go ahead and ask.
Denise Musioli, I live at 6 Midhurst in Nashua.
Okay.
And I am, I'm kind of on the fence about this project. One concern that I have, and I was at that meeting when the Conservation Committee did give, you know, a favorable rating or whatever you want to call it, but there were some stipulations. For instance, I have seen New England cottontail in that area. New England cottontail, a species of great concern, according to Fish and Game. That's an issue. And then the, one of the ladies at the Conservation Committee brought up some kind of turtle, and I want to say it was a spotted turtle, but I could be wrong, also an animal of concern. And then the last one was the peregrine falcon that I've seen flying around there. So these are animals that are going to be greatly impacted by the noise, you know, it's going to scare them, it's going to scare them away from where they live, basically. During the winter, they might have a reprieve, so that's one issue. I understand that you're going to work closely with Fish and Game. I'm concerned about the fencing. You know, during a game, if an animal gets in, because if the gates are open, is it going to get, be able to get back out and get to its babies and things like that? So that's something that you really need to consider. I'm not, I'm not thrilled with the fencing. I'm going to be straight up about that. The other issue is, so the conservation is a big issue. If you're going to use, if you decide to use natural turf, you have to be careful with lawn chemicals. What, we have to regulate what type of chemicals or, you know, if they do have to, use ice melt would be allowed in that area because that's going to leach down into the wetlands. I'm very confused about the biggest pond, the biggest wetland area. Is the public going to have access to that or is that going to be considered trespass as well? You know, the big, big lake where unfortunately a young, young man had drowned a couple of years ago. I don't know if anybody can answer that.
Well, we can certainly ask the question.
Okay. All right. And then, I'm just trying to think. So with the 20 parking spaces now, you're saying, I'm very adverse to the term trespass. You're saying you're going to allow light trespass. I would, I would ask that the planning make sure that that word is not in there because at any point in time, they can, they can just say, hey, you know what? It is trespass and we're not going to allow you to use those 20 spaces. Now, when those 20 spaces are full, and as he said, the gentleman that was speaking, I'm sorry, the gentleman, I forgot his name. But he said that, you know, he's seen 15 cars. On a summer day, you got cars all along Groton Road. So problem, you know, the problem with the, what happens when the 20 spaces fill up? Are you going to let us use the overflow parking that's, you know, that's, that's your land? How is that going to be handled? And if people come to the games, are they going to take up some of the 20 spots so that we won't have any place to park? What are we going to be using the state of New Hampshire land for? I mean, why, why, why are they asking the state of New Hampshire to, to, to take that land? I don't know what they're going, planning to do to. I see two, on that site plan, I saw two spots that look like it wasn't owned by anybody. So one he mentioned, but there's also one near letter P between N and P on that schematic there, or drawing, whatever you call it, site plan. And what is that, there's a little triangle, little square area. To me, that, to me, that indicates it's probably part of the state of New Hampshire land too. So I'm not sure why they're going after state of New Hampshire lands. They're going to give us a right of way, give us a right of way, leave that alone, let, you know, whatever's in there, just let it be. I also don't know what they're going to do with the gravel pit. What's going to be where the gravel pit is now? Because I don't see anything on the site plan showing what's going to actually be there for where the gravel pit is. And then also liability is, if somebody gets hurt in those 20, you know, the 20 parking spots, who's liability is that? He's saying that he's giving something back to the community by making sidewalks? Well, I don't know if you've ever driven by that road on a busy, beautiful spring day and you've got bicyclists, you've got cars in both lanes, and if you put a sidewalk there, you're going to make it even more dangerous for those bicyclists. Because trust me, I've seen many bicyclists almost hit. So that's another thing to consider. And I guess lastly is, hold on, I'm sorry, I had my notes in the other room. Give me one, one second, sorry. Sorry about that. I wasn't, I wasn't planning on having feedback. Let me just look real quick. So the, the wildlife people, the Conservation Committee had said something about regulating the fencing to allow the animals to get underneath it, I guess.
Yeah, you mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, what about the, what, what is going to be used for trash? Because that is, that is an area frequented by bear. And if you have trash that's not secured, what you're going to do is you're going to habituate a bear to humans and it's going to make it deadly for the bear. Humans never, humans against animals hardly ever lose. It's the animals that lose. We have whitetail deer, we have bobcat. These are all animals that I've seen.
Yeah, we, we get, we get the point on the animals. Yeah, you don't have to name them all, just.
I'm, I'm very concerned about the wetlands there. What, what's going, you know, are we going to have access? Is people going to still be able to use their kayaks and go in there? Because it's not fenced in. So I don't know if those questions will be answered at some point.
Okay.
Okay. And then these varsity games with the traffic, we have, I won't drill on the traffic, but we got a, we got a golf disc puck going in, a school, and now this. These roads were not built, these were rural roads meant for, you know, tractors. These roads are not going to handle that type of traffic and neither is the neighborhood. I mean, that's a lot to ask the neighbors to have to put up with. I guess that's, I guess that's it for now. I'll have some other points that I'll send in, in an email to you folks, but thank you, thank you for your patience.
All right, thanks. Anybody else on Zoom wishing to speak in opposition or concern?
Hi, this is Jackie Callahan. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm another Dunstable resident, so I appreciate you guys taking these questions from, from us too, concerns. I, I guess, you know, aside from the traffic, which I am a little bit concerned about, I do live on 1086, at 1086 Main Street. Our kids, you know, basically appreciate the backyard. They appreciate being able to hear an echo, you know, hear their echo. And, you know, I've seen what's happened with our, the land trust, you know, and, you know, the, the trees that they basically had to harvest for whatever purpose, whether it was conservation or for the lumber itself. But I've seen, you know, basically, I feel like I saw this coming. And so I'm trying to get my head around the project. And my biggest question, I don't feel like I'm clear on, so I apologize if it was explained, but I, I still don't understand how we're gaining 4% green space. I, I wonder if that's 4% more permeable land.
Correct.
I see trees, I see trees as, you know, so invaluable. So like, are we losing trees? I feel like that is going to increase. I don't know if I, if it's officially considered flooding, but it is a wetland area like you mentioned. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand how this project was designed and why the gravel pit wasn't repurposed for, say, a field that was impermeable if the gravel pit was also impermeable already. So basically, it's just trying to understand the layout of the project and, and how the green space has actually increased. And does that mean that there's an increase in permeable surface? And I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern on Zoom? See any hands up?
I don't see any hands up.
All right, I'll ask it this time. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Anybody here in the audience? Anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, this is, my name's Don Whalen, 12 Lincoln Avenue, Nashua. I'm not sure this is in favor or what it might be, but I was listening to the traffic and I know there wasn't a traffic study handled yet. But it was mentioned earlier by the gentleman that said this is going to be mostly sub varsity games, so JV and freshman. Most of the kids, and I've taken pictures of the football and baseball teams, JV and freshman, most of these kids don't drive. So they're going to either have to get dropped off or there'll be some sort of bus thing. So it's, I don't anticipate, if I had to guess, knowing, and I've been to a bunch of these games, and I encourage you, go by a BG varsity or freshman game, I mean, I'm sorry, junior varsity or freshman game, there's not a lot of people. I was at the game on Monday, there might have been 30 people watching the game. It's, I can't imagine there would be a ton of traffic. It's not the varsity games, like the, the number of cars and people you get at these Stellows games for the varsity team. So again, there's no traffic study done, but can't anticipate there'll be a ton because it's freshman and JV and most of them don't drive. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Hi, this is Aaron Fitzgibbons, 22 High Pine in Nashua.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, I know that there's a, I mean, there's a, this, I think would help relieve a lot of the, the other fields that are in Nashua. I mean, with, as they said, Bishop Curtin using a lot of the fields around the city. I mean, they have to use all the different, there's a lot of scheduling and sometimes game, they can be practicing at weird hours and having, it also, it can conflict with the city, with the city schools as well. So I mean, by having Bishop Curtin be able to use their own facilities, that helps free up a lot of the, the fields for the, the schools, the public schools as well. So I think it just helps, you know, with the other schools. That's all there's one there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? No hands, Linda?
No.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. I will now go back to the applicant here for any rebuttal. I think the primary just questions were around, I mean, just re-clarify the concept of how you're dealing with the traffic study. There was a couple of questions about fencing, maybe a little bit. There were some questions on the access to the existing wetlands and trash came up, I think.
Okay.
And then maybe you could explain a little bit between green space and impermeable and which one's regulated by the city.
Sure. Just let me know if I missed anything.
Yeah.
I'll start with traffic. So there were some questions about what's been prepared to date. So certainly an initial study evaluation has been prepared, a TIR worksheet, which is the city's tool to evaluate whether further study is needed. As I mentioned, we provided what I feel is a conservative analysis based on a peak condition that may happen once or twice at most a year. We're working with the city engineer and the city traffic engineer, where we have worked to identify a scope of further study that will look at the average or typical peak for, or average or typical traffic and impact for this facility. Will also be, as we expect, that the vast majority of our traffic will come to and from Main Dunstable Road to the highway. We kind of see that as the main route for most of our traffic. We'll be performing evaluations of some of the key intersections as we work our way east. I would say one of those key ones is the Groton Road, Main Dunstable, Buck Meadow Road, Gilson Road intersection there by Captain's Corners where the gas station is. You know, Scott and their team at Van S was, of course, the traffic consultant for the middle school project. They're very familiar with the area and the various projects and the impacts that that middle school project has and, as well as incorporating future projects. So they'll be well equipped to provide that further study, the analysis, the results to the city team for their review. And, you know, we're committed to solving those, those issues to, to their satisfaction. If there are any offsite improvements that are required, we don't anticipate any, but if there are, then we'll commit to working with them. So we're really putting ourselves at risk to, to really satisfy all of the city's concerns as it relates to, to traffic. I will note again, it's a, it's a somewhat seasonal use of the facility. And there's also, you're going to be very little, if any, impact to the AM peak hour. So again, we've got a slight impact in the PM peak and then we're kind of looking at Saturdays in that worst case scenario where the entire facility is, is being used at once as, as kind of the point of concern as we, as we move forward. So we're, we're really confident that we're going to be able to solve that in working with the city engineer and his team. I think that was it for traffic. So in terms of, of sound and light, so we really like the location of this facility. I talked about the features of the technology, the advanced features, Musco lighting is the name that's out there. Any facility you go to, everybody's using Musco lighting in terms of the ability to have these poles that direct light down. We do have some good buffering for the site. We're tucked back away from Groton Road. We've got some, you know, really good buffers to our north and to our west. We're, we're doing our best to maintain the tall standard trees on our Easterly property line. And then, of course, we've got the Dunstable Conservation Land. So it's really, in my opinion, a great location for this, for this use in terms of the potential impact to, to abutters. In terms of sound, so I don't have a great answer for you on the PA system. I was just speaking with Meg briefly about it, as well as the BG team. They really anticipate very minimal events after eight o'clock in terms of their normal operation. Certainly, they want the lights and the fields to be able to use them if they need to stretch again when days, you know, the, the days get shorter and that late practice, you know, continues to extend out. And it's going to be a limited use of PA system. So there's no grandstands. So a PA system is, is closer to the ground. It can be directed towards the field. It's not like Stello Stadium where it's way up on top and it's being projected out from that height. And there's no play-by-play or anything here. There's no varsity football games that are going to take place. So it's announcements about the field and maybe some music during pre-game or something like that if they do have a, a game. So my testimony would be, you know, fairly limited and benign use of a PA system, given, given the, the type of facility that this will be. I think it was mentioned twice about kind of animal control and fencing limits, the different type of species. So there were a couple hits as we go through the New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain permit. We coordinate with New Hampshire Fish and Game. I would say almost any site in the southwest quadrant has some sort of hit for types of snakes or turtles. So we're always coordinating with them. That's no different for this study. So we would follow, really follow their guidance in terms of wildlife. The fencing question came up with the CONCOM and it was just a discussion item. and it was just a discussion item. And the question was whether or not you would have the perimeter fencing for this site, go all the way down the ground or you'd have it six feet high to allow the critters to kind of come in and out. And our uh wetland scientist answered the question by saying, we're really gonna uh defer to, to Fish and Game just to, to see what they want based on the critters that are out there. They kind of make that determination. Uh I was involved with a solar project here in Nashville where we did raise uh the fencing up in certain locations to allow those critters through. But given the use here on site and the fact that we are fencing just around our facility and we're not necessarily fencing any wetlands or anything like that, they may prefer to keep those critters out and make them work around the fence so that they, they don't get entrapped inside. So um we'll coordinate that item heavily with, with DES and, and Fish and Game. Uh the lake trespassing wetlands question. So um you know, as part of this project, BG is committed to providing public access for parking and the trail connection through. That'll be protected. Uh public easement will be granted to the city. Uh so that right will be protected. I, I didn't understand if the lake or pond question was related to onsite or offsite. I do know there is a pond just onto the con, uh Dunstable land. Uh so certainly there wouldn't be general access allowed to this site. It would be limited as a cut through and for parking. Um so I don't know if that clarifies uh there. The gravel pit will, will be removed. That, that was a question that came up. So one of the fields is gonna be within that. We've got some cleanup effort there that'll help restore some of those wetland buffers. Uh the DOT piece of land, so it's a remnant piece. It's a, it's a ugly survey matter that we're gonna solve. Uh the state was not aware that they even own this sliver. So really, our intent would be to attain, obtain an easement over it to allow us to, to, to use it as proposed, which is a private site driveway connection and then a public trail for the city. Uh question about sidewalks. Uh yeah, it's a highly, you know, high-speed road, highly traveled road. It's a, it's a state road, New Hampshire one eleven A. Um I know folks are gonna use it and probably do use it now. Whether or not a sidewalk is there, I, I think by widening the road and providing that shoulder is going to, you know, enhance safety. Um people are gonna use it either way. Um trash, private trash onsite. I, I don't know if we've coordinated fully with the city in terms of trash pickup for the uh public parking area. I would assume there would be. We've still gotta uh dot the i's and cross the t's on some of the maintenance discussions in terms of who's doing what with um with DPW. But uh anything is better than what's out there now. Again, cars park along the streets. There's no trash receptacles out there. There's trash all over the place. So anything we do is gonna, is gonna help that. Uh and the last question was related to green space and losing trees. Certainly, there'll be trees cut as part of this project. Um again, we considered in terms of the calculating open space and from an impervious cover and runoff perspective, that much of that gravel operation is considered impervious. Therefore, that's why we feel we are slightly increasing uh open space. Either way, we're well within the uh, you know, minimum requirements for the zone out there. Um and uh the wetland buffers around, you know, some of those gravel areas are right on top of wetlands right now. So certainly, we would be pulling back from that and improving that situation. Did I miss anything?
Mr. Varley?
Just to clarify, because I, this question came up from a couple of people and, you know, asking why you weren't repurposing the existing sort of gravel area. And I, I think, just correct me if I'm wrong, but you are effectively utilizing that existing gravel hard pack for the fields and lot, parking lots, et cetera.
Correct, yeah. We're fully, I would look at this project as a half redevelopment and half development. So we are fully utilizing that area and repurposing that. And in my opinion, improving that area as it relates to open space and buffers. Thank you.
Okay. Um other questions by the board while we're in the hearing? Alderman, please.
Uh thank you very much. Um I guess probably Evan Alderman, I, I do get very sensitive to traffic issues and the fact that we have um a number of builds within that, within that area, all coming at once. And I, I do have a little concern about a traffic study, I mean, a full traffic study not being done. And, and it's very difficult because the truth is that I think the applicant said something about they probably wouldn't be building till twenty twenty-four. By that point, most of the other things, including the new school project, will be, will be done and so on. So um my, my question is, if they even did a traffic study now, would it change and impact by the time they actually built in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, I mean, Dan could probably, they, generally, they would project those changes into the study now, is my understanding. But you could probably clarify.
Yeah, that's correct. And as part of the scoping, what we've asked them to do is build upon the study that was done for the middle school, uh which accounts for the middle school development and some other things. But that's kind of the latest document that has the traffic impact. So they would um basically uh build, build upon those and fully consider their impact on top of the impact that's associated with the previously approved developments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um the, the other question was um relative to that this would be a freshman and JV. And I, and I do believe that they would have low impact on traffic and parking and so on. And, and a comment had been made that um they're in, they just signed a ten-year contract with Stellows. This build won't happen till twenty twenty-four, a year and a half. At that point, they're a little bit more into their contract. I think at this point, I, I would like to know if there would ever be a plan to put a varsity game in there because that could change the dynamic of everything. And being so far into the future, they may not be able to answer that. But it's more of a, um again, I always look towards the future as to how this impacts, especially people that are going to be new to that area, but to some of the people that spoke, that have been living in that area for a long time. And this does impact their life. Not, not that it shouldn't be approved, but that, because we all have to go with changes. But I'm just curious as to whether or not that would be done. And then my, my next question would be, we said that some trees would be removed. Do, at this point, do they know what the numbers are? I know that the ZBA would often ask, how many trees are you gonna remove to do this? Um would any of that have, would that be knowledgeable? And again, this does not necessarily say that I would or wouldn't vote for it. It's just questions I think I'd like to get out to the public.
Yeah, we can certainly ask about the tree cutting. I don't know if they have the exact number. We can, we can ask them on that.
Thank you.
Do you have any input on that, Neil? I don't know if you, maybe you have.
Yeah, so certainly the Stellows thing, as I understand it, one year into a ten-year lease. I don't think anybody can predict the future on that. Um this facility, as proposed, does not have spectator seating to support a varsity football event like that. So um I would think that if BG uh wanted to do so in the future, uh they would likely need to come back before this board because it would likely involve some modification of the facility to include grandstands and others, you know, large spectator support facilities. So um they are planning on having some varsity events here. Obviously tennis, um the track and field, those, those could hold varsity events. Um but certainly football, as we know, because that's kind of the, the big, the big spectator event. They would not be able to hold that at this facility, given, you know, that's, that's not our intent. So press boxes, grandstands, those aren't part of the plan.
Yeah, essentially, any of those hardscape constructions would be, that would, that would come back. That would, that would be something that's outside the plan that's presented in front of us.
Appreciate that. And, and I more wanted to get it out for the public to hear that, because I, I hear their concerns. And would you know about tree removal at this point, or is that still too early in the game? I, I do know you said that you would be maintaining as many of the large, older trees, which I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, there would be, I think, I don't know if I missed a specific question, but in the Easterly portion of the site, within the playfield area, there would be trees that would be cleared as part of the project. It was good, I, we went with the sidewalk with the Conservation Commission, which was great, um because we saw kind of the different areas of the site. I think on the Easterly side of the site, there are some more mature trees. And then as you transition to the middle, it's kind of low-growth brush, previously cleared areas that have kind of grown in, but there's no mature trees. And then, of course, on the westerly side, where the, where the gravel pit is, there's no trees there. So there would be some tree clearing. Uh you know, I think we're trying to protect as many of the mature trees along the Easterly side. And then, of course, everything to the north and to the west, you know, was, is no tree clearing whatsoever. So.
Thank you.
Ms. Harper?
I just have one more question as, as far as a, maybe it's a silly question, but as far as a starting signal for the, the track, or is it a, uh they using a, a gun sound or? A starting?
Starting pistol.
A starting pistol. I'm just curious.
I'm told it's an electronic sound.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Been a while since I ran track.
Well, that's why I, I wasn't sure if they still knew that or not.
Other questions for the applicant by the board or staff while we're in the hearing? Is everybody confident they have their questions regarding sound or times and the, because once I close the hearing, we really can't get back to the applicant unless I, you know, we do go through a reopening. So confident on that? Okay. All right. So I'll go ahead and close the hearing and then move to the meeting. So um thank you for the applicant. So uh, so I'll give a couple of my comments. Um I, I think this is a, an interesting development. I think it's a kind of a, personally, a good development for the site. Um we've seen a lot of other types of development out along there, which are probably more impactful, frankly, to traffic and other things. I mean, I can envision a housing development with hundreds of homes here, which would certainly have a much higher traffic impact than what's being proposed. So it looks low impact to me, um based on the amount of development we are seeing in, in other areas. So that's just my two cents on the impact side of it. I think that the, um, the cross connect between um Main Dunstable and the, and the conservation area, I mean, that's a pretty good thing. We actually don't see many applicants even make that kind of effort, frankly. Um so I'm appreciative of that. And certainly, building a parking area. I mean, I've been on this board for a lot of years, probably almost a decade now, or maybe more. I don't remember the last time somebody built a public parking lot for us. I literally don't remember any of them. So. So I think these kinds of things are um pretty big um givebacks um on the plan that we don't typically see, actually. So I, I think those are good. Um you know, the lights and the sound, I, I definitely have some concern. I mean, I live not too far from there. You hear some of the fields around the schools and stuff. Um I'm confident that though, if lights and sound are an issue inside of our ordinances timeframes, then they probably should be addressed on, at the aldermanic level. I mean, we have ordinances for light and sound. And if they're operating within those, I feel like that's the planning board's duty is to make sure that we're, that's happening. But if we feel like those are, are too broad, or somebody feels like those are too broad, it's not really a planning board thing. It's really go to your aldermanic representatives and talk about the, those ordinances. I mean, they exist and people have voted on them, you know? So um so that's kind of where I think that really lies. It's not necessarily, it's not out of the nature of a residential area, really. So these types of sounds. So but anyway, that's my couple of comments. I'm definitely welcome other people's comments, thoughts, discussion on the board here. Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um you know, I, I agree with you. I think there, there are some, some really positive aspects of this plan, particularly the, the public access as you described. And you know, you mentioned potential alternative uses. And there was at least a conceptual proposal that was presented to this board a few years ago that would have had a, I don't remember the number, but it would have been a significant number of, of houses. Um so I think it's right that you could have significantly more impactful development here. And I, I think particularly with the understanding we have and the testimony from the applicant that, of the type of use, the more limited varsity events, um you know, that impact will, will be even less, I think, including as to light and sound. Uh you know, I know I, I had initially expressed some concerns about traffic, but, but both given the practical realities of the site, you know, the testimony from the applicant that you, they really wouldn't be able to hold, you know, um big spectator events right now. And then also, you know, um comments from, from Dan about the work they've done, you know, in terms of considerations around the traffic study and the scope and, and the fact that the, you know, the estimates have been made very conservatively. Um I, I feel comfortable with, you know, the, the, you know, doing the phase one traffic report um as a condition rather than having that information upfront and the, you know, the overall impact of the site. So um you know, based on, you know, the testimony from the applicant and what we've discussed, I, I feel pretty comfortable with the plan.
Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh yeah, I, I strongly agree with both of you. I think we, we can't miss the central role that athletics plays in the mission of an institution like this. And it's outside this project, but it's connected to it. Their current facility, uh you can see very easily on Google, they have soccer field overlapping softball fields, overlapping football practice field, overlapping baseball fields. And I, I could imagine it's very, very challenging to run the athletic program they have where they currently are. This, this is an absolute need for them as an institution. I was surprised there weren't more people speaking for it. Um it seems like the lowest impact kind of use that you could have in that neighborhood. And um I'm also really grateful for the way BG has um set aside a parking space, is willing to deed and create the easement. I think all of that really answered a lot of the questions that I had coming in. There are some traffic potentials. I'm glad we have an alderman here. Anyone who's looked at our agendas and can see where we're going with our agendas, it's a city issue. It's something that the aldermen have to deal with and the engineering department has to deal with. Again, I think relatively to other potential developments in this space, it's, it's a low impact. The last part of it to me, it, it's interesting, the future use element of it. And um I think there are some issues that exist there. But I also think BG has very clearly made the best case they can that they are being um part of our community. And they are an integral part of the community. And I think um they'll be very open to future dialogue as the use of this facility evolves in the future. I feel very, very comfortable with it.
Other comments? Alderman, please.
Thank you. Um and again, still being new, please tell me if I, if I go off base here. Uh Mr. Chairman, I truly appreciated your comments as well as the others relative to um the, the low impact, the parking lot and, and maintaining that access to, to the, the area. Um I think that is really great concession from BG and, and I appreciate them doing it. Not everybody would do that. But I think that's kind of a, a, a good, a good meeting of the minds with, with the city and, and the people in that area. I also appreciated the, um, the speaker who brought up um the fact that it would free up city fields. And as um one of my colleagues here had mentioned, the overlapping fields that BG has, well, the city has a lot of overlapping fields too because they're getting used all the time. So to be able to free up anything that the city has would, would be a great thing. I also understand that this is more low impact than if we were to put a housing unit in there. And while the city does need as much more housing as possible, I think it's a good positive for the neighborhood to have a, a field within the neighborhood. Whether they're using it or not, it's still a good selling point. And I think it does help to bolster up their own real estate values as opposed to having more housing there, even though I do know that we do need it. But um I, I do still have some concern about the traffic. Even if it's low impact and it's only for certain times, I think it's as a city, not necessarily BG, but as a city, we have to always keep this in mind, that even if it's only from two to four or from this time to this time, during that time, it's going to have a larger impact on the residents. Overall, when we look at the numbers and say, well, there's only this much cars, Overall, when we look at the numbers and say, well, there's only this much cars, they're going to be confined to a certain period of time, which can have a very impactful, um, on, on those neighborhoods. So I think that even though we don't have a traffic study, um, I would like to, to see that if, once the traffic study is done, if it does have any kind of impact, that we have the ability to revisit, um, this, and I'm not sure it's that. And, and the trash, and while I understand that it's in negotiation, I am not a Ward Five alderman, but I have gotten phone calls from people in Ward Five, where the soccer fields are, et cetera, over by Captain's Corner, the amount of trash that there and ends up blowing over into the other communities, as well as into the street and so on. So it may sound like it's not important, but for these residents, for this trash to blow into their yard and so on, I really do think that that does need to be addressed and that we really should have a plan, and whether, if the city were to do it and they're only going to pick it up once, um, once a week, that's going to impact the neighbors that live in there, and they're going to end up with trash in their yard, and it's going to make the fields not look as, as good. If it's BG that will be picking up, will it be during, right after a game, will it be every other day? I, I really do think this needs to be, and sometimes we look at it, oh, it's just trash, but I would not want that trash in my yard. As far as sound is concerned, maybe you'll have a low impact of sound, but I, I live on Maywood Drive, um, which is still a, some of a distance from Pana Chuck, and when there are things that are happening, like when the Spartan Band is playing in the field in the back, sometimes it sounds like it's in my front yard, and I'm a good mile, mile and a half away from it. It's just the way it reverberates. So the more trees that you have, the less impact that is. I'm not going to ask for like a sound deadening type thing, but I just think we always need to keep that in mind when we're talking and thinking about that, so. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Somebody else? Comments?
So just in, I, I guess I just have a question to Dan, I mean, in, in terms of the, the traffic off-site improvements, I mean, in this vicinity of this and then, and this type of impact, I mean, the types of things you're talking about are like turning lanes, right? I mean, we're, these, they're, this don't seem to be anywhere near like traffic signal levels of impacts and things. I mean, you're talking, you're really talking signage and different types of striping and like a, probably a worst case, a turn lane, is, is, am I in the ballpark there?
Yeah, I think you, I think you've accurately described what we're envisioning. I, again, I'm not sure it'd rise to a turn lane, maybe, or maybe a additional shoulder, bypass shoulder to provide some turning capability. The things we've talked about are things such as, uh, perhaps radar speed feedback signs to try to encourage lower speeds to this area. There is the pedestrian crossing, as was referenced earlier. This is, uh, I believe it's posted forty miles an hour, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so we do want to, uh, you know, promote slower speeds to this area, particularly because there's going to be a lot of turning movements at times at this location.
Yeah.
Then also that pedestrian crossing, so. Remote from the site to other intersections, um, you know, I envision, I envision probably even, even less, you know, perhaps signing, there may be some key pedestrian crossings along Main Dunstable that we want, some enhanced, uh, treatments for that sort of thing. That's what I envision, but again, uh, we reserve, uh, the right to, um, specifically define what they are based upon whatever the findings of the study, uh, study is.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody understands, like, the applicant going forward in this manner is essentially putting themselves at risk, it's not putting the city at risk. They're actually, they're just saying, yeah, we'll do whatever the study says is going to be done. So it's, it's not like the city's going out on a limb here, it's, it's really the applicant that's kind of taking that risk, as they stated. So I'm reasonably comfortable. Um, and then certainly at the level of impact not being this major, like adding lanes and signals, that doesn't seem like we'd be anywhere near that, so. Other comments? No? Okay. Um, hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved that we approve new business A two-two dash zero-one-seven-five, finding that the plan meets the recommended outlines in Site Plan NRO Section 190 dash 146D with the following stipulations. One, will read the request for waiver of Section 190 dash 279 EE. Is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation?
Mr. Meehan?
Yes?
Just to, um, per, uh, Mr. Hudson's earlier comment, I think we were going to revise that, so if conferred only to adjacent parcels?
Ah, I'm sorry. Uh, may I rephrase that?
Sure, go ahead, yep.
The request for a waiver of 190 dash 279 EE, which requires existing conditions to be on adjacent parcel, on adjacent parcels?
Yep.
Is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Okay.
Number two, the request of, for a waiver of NRO Section 190 dash 184 D1 is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, the request for a waiver of NRO Section 190 dash 172 is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four, the request for a waiver of Section 190 dash 89A is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number five, as written dated, what would be the date?
The twelfth.
Twelfth, September twelfth. Number six, as written. Number seven, also as September twelfth.
You might, you might have an older staff report, you, Mr. Bollinger, do you have a, a number one there to take and reference?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, we can just confer for one moment?
We're going to confer.
Yeah, that's fine. Take, take your time.
I'm down to seven.
We got through the waivers, we got the letter. Is number six the same?
Number six is the same.
Yep.
And then seven through thirteen as written?
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so we have that motion to approve, um, this new business, case A twenty-two dash zero-one-seven-five, with the, um, thirteen stipulations as stated by Mr. Meehan. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bollinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, let me find my agenda here. Okay, so next up on our agenda, um, is a, uh, other business, item number one. This is the review of the tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. There was one in the additional materials that was presented today. Anybody have a chance to take a look at that and want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have reviewed the, uh, the technical review meeting minutes and determined there are no proposals of regional impact.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Barley, there are no proposals of, uh, regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second?
I'm not seconding, I'm, I have a discussion on seconded.
Okay. Yeah, look, someone want to second it here? Second by Mr. Meehan. Discussion, yep?
Yeah, just the, uh, the item, uh, A twenty-two zero-two-zero-three relative to the casino use in the formal retail space, I'm just curious if that could potentially rise to the, the significance of being a regional impact. It is on the, uh, in a property close to the border.
Yeah, it's a good question, because I always, I, I could be wrong about this, I always understood that the regional impact analysis was only New Hampshire, but I don't know if there's technically, and I know it's, it's basically notice requirements anyway, but I don't know what the- I don't know if it passes, uh, I know prime wetlands don't pass into, uh, additional communities, so I assume they probably don't pass into Massachusetts, but, uh, I don't know. Good question.
We'll look into the statute to see if, uh, for impacts like traffic and, and things like this would, would indeed constitute a, a DRI.
Yeah, and I guess the funny thing, you could just notify, um, you know, Tinsborough or whatever, you know?
I'm happy to modify my motion.
Yeah, I said, I don't want to, I don't, while that review is, is being done, I don't want to bind ourselves, so I don't know. I don't know if it warrants an amendment.
I don't think so, yeah.
I mean, I, I, you know, I think it's fine, if, if no one objects, I can amend my-
Sure, go ahead.
-regional motion, so I would amend my motion to say that I've tentatively concluded that there are no proposals of regional impact, however, that, that is with the understanding that staff will review, um, case number A twenty-two dash zero-two-zero-three to determine whether it would be appropriate to notify, um, the abutting municipality in Massachusetts with regard to that project.
Okay, so we have that motion as presented by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second again? amended? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? That motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I'd officially like to abstain from that last motive.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Thank you.
Did you get that, Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Okay. Um, discussion items, I think we just wanted an update on the, um, status of environmental assessment for, I don't remember the case number, but it's essentially the Temple Street?
Sure, yeah, to-
Make sure you get in the mic.
To jog the board's memory, um, you had requested a environmental review, uh, for the Temple Street asphalt plant, um, so we are looking to procure the services of an environmental firm. Um, we are, we've yet to sign a contract with such a firm, but we believe we are close to doing so. Um, we have established a, a scope of work, um, that will look at dust, um, uh, I believe, traffic impacts as well, uh, and, and a potential air and, and water quality impacts. Um, so that's the scope of the services, um, and we are close to finalizing a contract with a prospective consultant for that.
Okay. Um, questions by the board?
Just, and, and I appreciate if you haven't gotten to this point yet, given the, the contract is not finalized, but have you had any discussions about what they might anticipate in terms of the timing of completing the study?
It, it, it could be in the realm of a month.
Yep, okay. The only other question I had was, um, any information for the board on, um, the remanding of the Costco case for us?
Uh, we are having an internal staff meeting next week to discuss the process on that, but, uh, our initial position is that, uh, the, the remand basically constitutes basically a restart in the process. So, uh, we'll basically treat it as a new site plan.
Got it. Okay. Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the, I, I couldn't quite hear, hear you, I have hearing aids, I'm always trying to listen in. I think you said it, the environmental study would include traffic, meaning the dump trucks that are entering and exiting the property?
So, so I think what, I, I may have been spoke slightly, um, we do, so we already have the traffic study for that, um, but more in terms of, of the, the environmental impacts associated with that.
Okay, all right. And then-
Go ahead, Mr. Meehan.
Every, every meeting, there was a traffic issue, you know, and I just, driving home today, sitting through lights three times, um, I feel that need, the issues. We are always relegated to, and I've learned a lot, right, this year, um, in focusing on the scope of the project in front of us, um, but I keep thinking, when do, who talks about traffic citywide? Who, who is understanding the issues at that scale, and, and does that come to us? Is, is that alderman? How does that work?
Well, there are, there are corridor studies that have been proposed. I don't know if you can, I mean, there's an Amherst corridor study, I don't know if you know off the top of your head which ones have been proposed, and I don't know if we know the status of which ones are funded or underway.
So we, yeah, we have a corridor study that we're going to be commencing soon for the West Hall Street corridor, um, from Riverside Street out to the Hollis Town Line. Um, that came about as, you know, a response to both a fatality that had occurred on the corridor, but also, uh, in response to public input about concerns about traffic and difficulty making maneuvers along the corridor. So that one's coming up. Um, I don't, I don't, I wasn't very involved in the master planning process, but traffic's usually part of a discussion of that. I know Amherst corridor was one where there was different alternatives looked at, Main Street as well. Um, in terms of, uh, looking on the overall community basis, certainly engineering department, uh, is engaged in that, monitoring traffic conditions and trying to look ahead and resolve issues. Um, also, there is the National Regional Planning Commission, uh, who has a T-Tech committee, uh, they also look at regional traffic issues, so. Um, there are a number of folks looking at them, but certainly, uh, we in the engineering department of Public Works welcome feedback, input, concerns, things we should be thinking about, that sort of thing, because, uh, as with the board, I mean, we specifically review each individual thing as it comes in, um, but, uh, there are areas in West Hall Street, that was an area that's been built up over time, probably development by development by development, right? Um, and now that's reached the point that it's, uh, it's a cha, it's a challenging corridor, and so now we're looking, looking to try to remedy that on a corridor-wide basis, so, uh, it's not unreasonable for the public to be asking these questions in areas of the community that are currently growing, so we, we welcome that interest in feedback and concern.
Thanks.
And I guess any, any of those corridor studies that get completed, I guess they, planning would probably, could send those to us for their, you know, for review, yeah.
And we can certainly, um, anytime there's an application before us that, you know, somehow touches such a corridor study, we can speak to its relationship to, to that study and how, you know, any possible planned alternatives or, or remediation strategies from the study would, would play with any development.
Yep.
Further, just to the, to the West Hall Street corridor study, I mean, uh, we are, we are commencing a corridor study. Out of that, we anticipate will come some, uh, short, short-range, uh, opportunities for some, uh, improvements, probably to pedestrian crossings, that sort of thing, but we fully envision there'll be some longer-term, higher dollar cost items that will come out of that. The state recently, uh, the governor signed a ten-year plan. Immediately, we started a two-year process for, um, the next ten-year plan process. It starts at a regional planning level where community solicits, solicits projects for consideration, ranked at the, uh, regional planning level, and then that goes to the state, and there's public hearings and, uh, so on and so forth, but it, it, it's the beginning of the process for that next plan. Um, staff did prepare, community development in conjunction with engineering, did prepare a concept, uh, and an application for improvements along West Hall Street corridor for consideration and ranking as part of that process. Um, some ideas we were, looked at were, you know, potentially a couple of roundabouts along the corridor, um, some, uh, boulevard-type treatment, raised medians, uh, filling sidewalk gaps and that sort of thing. It's, it's, it was a, you know, initial estimate was a significant price tag, but that's why we're, uh, you know, we, we sought, sought that as, uh, application for consideration for inclusion in the state's plan.
Alderman Cleese?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. Usually the aldermanic involvement in it is paying the bills. Um, we, we do make a lot of noise about every time a new project comes through, how is that impacting it, hence was my question. We have a lot of things that are happening at one time in that area, and while we look at how this particular one impacts it, and I was glad to hear that, we look kind of ahead. But traffic is a, a real issue, and it, it's probably outside of your scope to be able to solve that, um, but I think it's just something that each time something comes up, we need to ask that question. I think when we ask a question often enough, things get done, traffic studies get done, we become, um, more, better to try to create innovative ways of being able to handle this as you, you spoke about, roundabouts and so on. I leave it to the experts to do it, um, and then when the bills come to, or the request for funding comes to the alderman, that's when we ask a lot of questions, are there alternatives, are there this, are there that? But, um, I think as a whole, whether planning board zoning, um, you know, engineering, we need to keep asking those questions, so I, I'd still like to hear them and not say, well, there's very little we can do. Conversation gets things moving, so, thank you.
Mr. Bollinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll just add to the discussion, it's, it's not always entirely upon the city to, to resolve those issues. Each individual application is looked at individually to assess their impacts. It could be a physical improvement, it could be an equipment purchase, uh, it could be a monetary contribution. We voted on a number of projects in my time on the board where there was a significant dollar contribution granted to the city, so I, I think we don't necessarily have to have, we don't have to have a Main Dunstable corridor study, we don't have a, have an East Dunstable Road corridor study, or, you know, a Lund Road corridor study per se, because each individual applicant is, needs to assess and mitigate the level of their direct impact. So, yes, there are-
So yes, there are some larger cities, I will grant to everybody that is a resident of the city, there's certain corridors I don't want to drive at certain times, so, but I think this board tries, tries to, you know, temper that in a way based on the individual level of impact of any particular application that we see. So that's, that's my two cents on it, so.
Any other discussion items?
Just briefly, I would like to note the lack of profound noise emitted from that box over there. I don't know if it's a fluke or if it's something, but it was really nice.
Why did you ruin it?
Someone did something, I'm grateful.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I just want to thank the board, and I know my next few meetings are going to be a lot of learning. I appreciate you tolerate my many questions and whether they go that way, and I know you're always going to have new aldermen and new board members, but I'm really looking forward to this, and much to what other people do, I volunteered to be on the board when the last alderman left. I did tell the president that I was willing to do this, and I know it means a lot more work, but I'm looking forward to learning, so, and I'm looking forward to learning from all of you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from staff or anybody else? No? All right. Take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riley? So we have motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. 9:31.